All right, so there were some questions left over from the review, so that's what we're going to talk about. So I've got my list and we'll see how much I can get done in the first hour. So the first one was just to talk about half-lives. So there are, in general, a couple of different kinds of questions that we can ask about half-life. So half-lives were that content back in chapter 14, where we dealt with picking up essentially with integrated rate laws where we left off. So one of the things with half-lives is we are only going to ask about first-order half-lives. In previous semesters, we asked about more, but we have slimmed the content down to accommodate the Friday workshops, so we care about first order only. Which means, we may also care about our first-order integrated rate law. So this equation, even though it was from last semester, last exam, is still one you should be familiar with because we may very well still need to use this. But the special thing about a half-life in first order is that the half-life is going to be equal to the natural log of 2 divided by k. And the natural log of 2, this is one of those times where it's got, a lot of people use, and I frankly always double-check your exams so that both of these will always work. 693 divided by the rate constant. Okay, and notice that that's a lowercase k. So whether you remember this is a natural log of 2, or whether you remember the number is up to you, these will get you the same answer. And I always make certain that on the exams, either one of these works because I teach both of them. And so I make a certain that on your exam, either one of them works. So the first kind of question that we can potentially ask about is oftentimes relatively straightforward, and it says something like this. The half-life for a reaction is, I don't know, we'll do this in seconds, still 18 seconds. What is the rate constant? And that one is, hopefully, just like it sounds like. You're given the half-life, so you're given a piece of information and you are asked for a second piece of information. And there is one equation that does that, it's the one we were just talking about up here. So in this case, so my half-life is equal to, and we're going to use both of these just to show that they are not different. So my half-life is 18 seconds. And then I can either solve for that with the natural log of 2. So 2. Here, k is equal to 0.0385. We get that a number of decimal places that you might see on an exam. And if I was using the other equation, this is still 18 seconds. Of course, this is inverse seconds. Seconds equals to 0.693 divided by k. As I'm typing into my calculator, try to make sure I get those in the correct order. And I get the k is equal to 0.0385. Exactly the same number. So that's one potential option where all, all you're looking for is one equation. The other kind of problem is a little bit more, is a bit more. Just go with that, it's a little bit more. And that's one where we can still ask and give information about a half-life. I am actually going to type this one out just to make my life a little bit easier. But we're actually still going to use the information we just did because we worked hard for that. So the half-life of a reaction is still 18 seconds. How long does it take for? Not an even number. 20% for 20% of of the reaction to be completed? Of a first-order reaction, I should say first order. So now what we're going to do is, this is now a two-step problem. So this 20% is not really related for, to the half-life. We can think about it because if it was 50%, 50% complete, then we would be at the 18 seconds. So my final answer has, has to be less than 18 seconds. But aside from that piece of information, we really don't know. So we're actually going to use the integrated rate law for this. But in order to use the integrated rate law, which again, there were multiple versions of this equation, so if you have a different one memorized, that's still fine and wonderful. What we need now is, is that the question asks how long? Well, how long should be my time? That's what that's asking me for. And then this 20% is how I'm going to figure out my natural log and my concentrations. I'm going to work with those for that, which means that I still have a variable that they didn't give me in the problem, which is k. But what they gave me is they gave me the half-life. So this is the part where what we actually first have to do is solve for k. So this is the one where, this is actually the reason why I picked 18 seconds is because we've already done the math for that, but you would actually have to look at this problem and say, you know what, I actually have to solve for, using the half-life information first before I can move forward. So I, I have to solve for k before I can actually complete this problem. So it's essentially utilizing half-life information to solve a first-order rate law problem. So we already did this part, so my value of k is equal to 0.0385. So we're just going to use that. And then, this is again, the reason I picked this one is because I know a lot of folks didn't like this phrasing, so let's talk through this phrasing. 20% of the reaction to be completed. So realizing we're talking about for 20% of the reaction, what we're talking about then is that kind of reaction coordinate diagram, where we start at zero and we would go to 100. And we would assume that at 100% completion, that we would have used up used up the reactants. So that's just the assumption that we make in kinetics. So no matter what's happening as I go from products to reactants, whatever, whatever winds up happening here. Whatever winds up happening here, completion should be when I've used up all my reactants, so this should be zero. So this should be 0% of that concentration of the original. And over here at the beginning was 100% of my original. So as I go, I'm only thinking about zero, or I think about 20% completion. So if I'm at 20% completion, I should still have about 80% of my initial concentration. So at 20% completion of the entire reaction, I expect to have most of my reactants left because my reaction has barely begun. At 20% completion, my reaction is just getting started. 20% of my day has elapsed, my day has just barely gotten started. I still have 80% of my day to go, I still have 80% of my reactants to use up. So that's how that 20 and 80 works. So when it says completion, that's where, when we're trying to talk about this initial concentration, we're going to use that point 8. So people use this in lots of different ways. You can go back and think through, back from chapter 14, because there were about three different ways to think this through and therefore use this equation. What I am going to do is I am going to use the natural log of 1 for the original. So I am just going to say that my original concentration is 1, and therefore I'm going to say that my concentration at whatever time this is, is 0.8. I've had plenty of people that use 180, and if you want to use 180, also fine and wonderful. But this is an either-or situation, so either you are using 1 and you're using point 8, or you're using 180. No mix and matching. Those two numbers are, the important thing is the ratio between them. So no mix and matching. Okay, I've scribbled all over everything, but I do actually have all the numbers I need now. So this is going to be the natural log of, I'll just write this out one more time. What is k plus the natural log of the original? This is the natural log of 0.8 equals negative, where's my value of k go? 0.385 plus the natural log of 1. For those of you that haven't done it before, the natural log of 1 is just 0, which is part of the reason why I like to pick 1 when I can. Because this is, this is 0, like you can put it into your calculator, the natural log of 1 is 0. And that also just saves me a little bit of time, the natural log of point 8 is 0, negative 0.22314. And we should always get a positive value of t. So my, oh, don't, no, don't lose the zero. 5.0385. I am just trying to copy things down. I'm just failing to. Which by the way, is not the only reason, but is definitely part of the reason why we have part of the rubric for your short answer problems to include like, what happens if you just make a small calculation mistake? And if everything else is right, and it's just a small calculation mistake, that's only minus 1 because it happens to me. It happens to me, like just now, suddenly lost a zero, okay. So sorry about that. Seasonal allergies, not my friend. Also, it's too early in the morning, I haven't taken my allergy meds yet. Sorry about that. Okay. So we solve for time. So in general, when we're talking about half-lives, these are the two main types of questions we can ask. Either something where we either give you, and we could have given you k and asked for the half-life, that's also something we could do, so anytime that there's an equation, we can always go the other direction. So this is one where we have an equation with two variables, we have the half-life and the rate constant. In this question, I gave you the half-life and asked for the rate constant. We could have gone the other way, we could have given the rate constant and asked for the half-life. So that's an option we could have done. Similarly, you can go back and look at some of the other reactions and other setups that we did for first-order reactions, because there are a couple different ones. Where I, we also could have gone, so this one asked for time, so it gave the half-life the first order. And then it asked for how long for a different amount to be completed. Similarly, we could have said something about giving initial concentrations and saying, if this other time elapses, then how much do you have left over? So just always remember that these are equations that have multiple variables in them. And as long as we give you enough information that you can have three out of the four of them solved, we can always do setups with three out of the four variables, no matter what they are. So that one at least, so that gives you guys some ideas of half-lives. I did just do calculations and I skipped over what a half-life is, so if you were looking for that general information on what a half-life is, I apologize, but I left it out. But I am actually just going to keep moving forward to see what I can get done in the time I have. Still, Le Chatley is principal. So the other request was for Le Chatley's principle, and yes, I am in fact grabbing notes for this, and I'm grabbing notes for this because without my notes, I usually miss one of them. And I don't want to miss one of them, I would like to do all of them. But without the notes, I typically miss one. Okay. So we do refer to this as Le Chatley's principle. So essentially what we assume in Le Chatley's principle is we always assume in Le Chatley's principle that you have reached equilibrium already, and so we usually assume that we actually begin and we actually start at equilibrium. And then, something happens. So everything was fine, everything was okay, and then something happens. So that's something to happen is going to, and this is the part where we can call it different things, so we can call this a stress to the system. This could be an addition or removal of something out of the system. Lots of different options, so, but we, we assume that we begin at equilibrium, something happens. And then we're asked basically how, it's really how do we get back to equilibrium? How do we get back to equilibrium? Because we have gone away equilibrium. So with a stress or additional removal, we are away from equilibrium, and so the grand question is, how do we go back? How do we get back? And so the getting back then is where we start to talk about shifting. So we're going to say that we're going to either shift right or left, right being to products, or we're going to shift left, that being to reactants. And we can also describe this instead of shifting left and shifting right, we can also say that if we're shifting right to products, we can also say that that is favoring the forwards. So favoring the forward reaction, shifting left back to the reactants would therefore be favoring the reverse reaction. So there are different ways to describe this. On exams, we typically just use one of them. So do be aware that we don't use all three of these all in one go, so you do need to be familiar with all of this wording. Out of my options. So let me actually try to think of one that might be helpful. So we're going to assume that we are talking about something relatively straightforward. That being of lead to nitrate. And this is going to be, actually, this will be a solid. And there's going to be water, basically there's a rock. There's a rock hanging out in water, but water's not going to be participating in the reaction. Water would really only be helping getting things to go into the aqueous state. So we have a reaction here. But really, all we're trying to do is describing a rock as it sits on like the bottom of a pond. So here's my rock sitting in some water. So there is water, but the water doesn't participate chemically in the reaction. So if I have this particular reaction set up, I could actually describe something happening to it. So for example, I could say with this reaction, I could say that we add chloride ions which precipitate my lead 2+ into lead chloride as a solid. And the question is now from there, what happens? So the weird thing is, is that you'll notice chloride ions aren't anywhere in this reaction. They are nowhere. But what the chloride ions will do is they will actually cause an additional reaction to happen. And they'll actually remove my lead out of the aqueous state. So what this is saying, even though it's not saying it in those words, is this is really removing lead 2+, the aqueous state. Since it's removing the lead 2+, my reaction is actually going to shift to the right. Because it's going to go back in and say, oh no, we don't have enough lead now to reach equilibrium, so we're going to create more products. Shift right to basically fill the gap. Get more products. Because we lost them. So we lost, we lost a product when we removed lead 2+. So therefore, this is going to shift to the right to replace it. Conversely, I could take the same equation, but I'm going to write it out again, just so that y'all can see that this is a different setup. Because one of the things I'm trying to get clearer are some of the notes that seem to make sense. But then when people read them, they apparently do not make as much sense as I wish they did. So we're talking about the exact same reaction, but something different is going to happen now. So something completely different is happening, so this is now, this has reached equilibrium, life is happy, life is good. But now, we are actually just going to add something to this. So now we are going to add something else, nitrate in it. We're going to add sodium nitrate. Sodium nitrate is going to have, which we'll just put aqueous so that you guys know that's soluble. We add sodium nitrate, this is going to give me more nitrate ions. So this is in fact adding nitrate ions, so now I'm going to have too many products. Since I'm adding my product, so now this is going to shift back to the left to compensate for the fact that there's too many products. Now, one thing that we should note on here is that because this is a solid, I could actually add or subtract as much of this as I wanted and nothing would happen. Because, because if I was to write out my k expression for this, my k expression doesn't have any solids in it. So my k expression for this is just my lead 2+ plus my nitrate. So whenever you're trying to think about, is my equilibrium affected, you can always write out k. And if it's just adding or removing components, this will help you out. So that lead nit, that lead nitrate solid is not in the equilibrium expression. It's a solid, we do not put solids and pure liquids in here. So because solids and pure liquids do not belong here, adding or subtracting that solid won't matter. Will, will not affect the equilibrium. I could dump in another, like, whole kilogram, wouldn't change my equilibrium at all. Because it's not in the expression. So there's adding and subtracting. So there's, there's a changing that is a k versus q setup. Then the changes to temperature, this is the one time where, and I didn't want to make sure we talked about this because it's going to seem like it goes contrary to what I just said. Here's the weird thing, is that when you change temperature, you change the temperature, you actually change k. So what I just said about, hey, if it's not here, then it's not in there, technically k is part of the expression. And changing the value of k will change your equilibrium. And that's what happens every time you change temperature. Every time you change the temperature, you change the value of k. So we could actually still use the exact same setup. I'm going to have to take a guess at this. Pretty confident, I know the answer. Because most of these are endothermic. So we are we're going to assume that my delta H value for this is why'd you make an assumption? We're going to assume the delta H of the solution here is a positive 2 kilojoules per mol. Not a lot, but that's going to be our assumption, we're going to assume our delta H of the solution for this is positive 2 kilojoules per mol. What that means is I can actually think about this, since this is positive, I can think about this as an endothermic reaction. Since I can think about this as an endothermic reaction, I can essentially add heat like it was a reactant. So I can have heat on here as if it was a reactant. Now that I'm thinking about that, now if they tell me that we increase the temperature, that basically is going to say that I'm increasing my heat here, and if I increase the heat, I'm going to expect it to shift to the right. If you remember, we actually talked about this idea back in chapter 13 about endothermic and exothermic heats of solution, and what happens to them when we change the temperature. So granted, this right now is set up to also be a delta H of solution. And so increasing temperature shifts us to the right. We could also have a setup where we were talking about something different. So if I had aluminum, I might leave out some of my state symbols just to make sure that I can get this correct. We're, yeah, I'm going to leave out some state symbols just to make sure I got this. So it's actually iron is a liquid plus aluminum oxide, L2O3. But this one is an exothermic reaction. You get heat out of this one, so we're just going to give ourselves a negative delta H value, let's say 2,000 kilojoules. It produces a lot of heat per mol, we're just assuming it's equilibrium, why not? This one down below here, if we increase the temperature, this would shift left. Because my heat now is here, because this isn't, as a product, because this is an exothermic reaction, which is going to make it shift back that way. So we can still think about this as products and reactants. Even though really what's happening is anytime you say that we're changing the temperature, we are changing k. We're changing the equilibrium constant every time we say, hey, we're changing the temperature. So every single time, that's what we're doing, really changing k, but we're going to predict which way it goes by talking about products and reactants. Changes temperature. Changes to volume. So here's the weird thing with changing volume is we care about the partial pressures of the gases. So this is one where we can go back and think about the nitrogen plus three hydrogens. These are all going to be gases. Gases. To 2, which is 3, gas. And if we wrote out our k expression, our Kp expression would be the partial pressure of ammonia squared divided by the partial pressure of nitrogen times the partial pressure of hydrogen cubed. So this is my value of k. Then, the problem usually says something like the mixture is at equilibrium. The volume of the cylinder of the container for the mixture expands, why not? We'll expand things, expands to twice its volume. What happens? So if the container expands, so we had a whole bunch of gases hanging out inside a container. And now my container somehow magically expands to be, that looks like four times as big, anyway, bigger, it's bigger now. And I still have these same four little particles hanging out. The thing is, is that as that changes, the partial pressure of each of my individual gases decreases. So if my volume increases, my pressure decreases. Notice, I still care about the partial pressures of all the gases. I do not care about the total pressure. I don't care. I care about the partial pressures of the individual gases. Yeah, the total pressure is also changing, so when we talk about this, a lot of times we say the pressure is changing. But the only thing we actually care about, again, is what's in my equilibrium expression. Again, k would tell you, changing k would change my temperature. Again, K would tell you, changing K would change my temperature, or changing temperature would change K. But I've got all these partial pressures. And so if those are changing, we can do algebra to demonstrate this, but what's going to happen is if the, when the pressure goes down, we're basically going to favor the side with more moles of gas. So when the pressure decreases, we shift to more moles of gas. The pressure decreases, we shift to more moles of gas. In this particular case, I have one mole with nitrogen and three with hydrogen, so this is four moles here. And two moles here. So therefore, I'm going to shift to the reactant side, because that's where the more moles of gas are. Conversely, if we had the opposite happen, and if our volume went down, which means all of my partial pressures go up, we would shift to fewer moles of gas. And notice that this is not a products and reactants thing. This is just whichever side has fewer moles of gas, whichever side has more moles of gas. So you do have to go back and analyze that. So you are expected to go and be able to count moles of gas on either side of the reaction, because that's how we figure this one out. Now that we're talking about gases, I'm pretty confident I know which one's next. And again, I really am trying to follow my own notes so that I don't miss one, because this one, addition of an inert gas. So this is again, we can actually use the same idea. And it's the same general concept. But now, instead of talking about volume, what we're seeing is if we started, we're going to start with the blue, we'll start with the red one, that's the one we're using. If we're starting and we're talking about this box, which I'll just put in the little highlighty border around. And here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to add a gas that does not react. By adding a gas that does not react, I could use something like helium. I could in fact, dear listeners, use anything that's a noble gas. So a lot of times, we have different ways to describe these. We're not going to use radon, because radons are radioactive. So I could use any inert gas that I want. Inert just means that it doesn't react or cannot react. Because of that, I can use any noble gas. Noble gases do not react, that's why they are called noble gases. It's as if they are too good to hang out with the lower classes of the rest of the periodic table. So the noble gases are here on the far right-hand side of the periodic table. So if you have something and it just says that they added xenon, or they added neon, or any of these, that's supposed to be an inert gas, something that does not react. So if I add helium, here's the weird thing, I add helium, you might notice, it's not a change in temperature. And helium's not present in any of these partial pressures. If you add helium, nothing happens. It will not affect equilibrium. This is the reason why earlier, when I was saying, hey, I know we're just going to say if the pressure increases, then this happens, if the pressure decreases, then this other thing happens. But that's only because changing the volume affects the partial pressures. And what we're really trying to say previously is if the partial pressures of my gases change, then something happens, because I don't care about the total pressure. I only care about the partial pressure of all my individual gases. So here, I can add helium. But helium doesn't affect the reaction. Helium's an inert gas, it affects the total pressure, but we don't care. We do not care about the total pressure. It's been a long weekend for me, so I really want to say some four-letter words, but I've not. So last thing, catalyst. So here's the thing, is that we get so used to catalysts doing stuff, that we're like, ooh, catalyst. Something must happen, right? And I mean, it does, kind of. A catalyst will still change the activation energy. That's what it does. Catalyst changes the activation energy of a reaction. But when we're talking about equilibrium, catalysts don't do anything. So, so your catalysts catalysts do not affect big capital K. They don't affect the equilibrium constant, they don't affect that. Technically, if it makes you feel any better, it would help you get to K faster. Right? Because catalysts are a speed thing. But we don't care about that. Speed, how fast you get to that point doesn't matter. We don't care. So catalysts do speed up the reaction, and so you would get to equilibrium faster. But that's all it would do, and we actually don't care about that. So that hopefully helps you guys out with Le Chatley's principle. The other one someone wanted to know about, and I do have time for this, I teach class at 9:00 AM. Got time for one more, one more. The other thing that somebody wanted to talk about was KW. So KW is known as the ion product constant for water. Here's the deal. We haven't done it yet. But if we want to write a K expression, well, K expression for the following reaction. Aqueous. Aqueous. We could write a value of K for this, and my K expression would look like this. Products of a reactant, but we exclude pure solids and pure liquids. That's a pure liquid, so we're going to exclude it. Looks like that. We are going to call this KW. We're going to have one more way to write this. Because we could also say, you know what? We're talking about aqueous solutions, we're talking about water, there is a lot of water. And a lot of times, those protons, that H+, which is a proton, doesn't actually hang out all by itself. A lot of times, it hangs out with another water molecule. Cool, we can do that. Now, my KW is equal to H3O plus, plus O minus. So one of the things that makes the KW special is when we were in chapter 16, so this is chapter 17 information, when we were in chapter 16, and we were talking about values of K, we were like, alright, we're doing KC, we're doing KP, my reaction can go forward, my reaction can go backwards. I can multiply all of the coefficients by two. I can do all kinds of stuff, and I can still come back and talk about values of K, and my value of K changes, but that's okay. Because it's just this generic KC, KP thing, I do what I want, and as long as I define my reaction, as long as I define my reaction, everything's okay. What KW does, and the important thing about KW is we don't manipulate KW, we don't manipulate the reaction. This is always the reactant. And I realize that I did give you guys two different options for it, but that's all, but those are my two options for the reactant. These are always my products, and we never write this the other way. So we do not put the proton and the hydroxide ion on the left-hand side, and the solid, the altogether unionized water on the right. We never write it like that. It's part of the definition. So KW, the ion product constant of water, by definition, has the water on the left-hand side in the reactants, and the proton and hydroxide on the right in the products. So this is part of its definition. Now, one of the other important things about KW is we can, it's actually a couple of different important things about KW. One of these is if we have pure water, that means that if all we had was pure water, that actually would mean that my H+ concentration should be equal to my OH- concentration. Or again, we can always, whenever we're talking about H+, we can always flip that out with H3O+. I know not everybody likes that, but honestly, this is something you need to get used to. Because you're going to see this happen everywhere, as long as you're in aqueous conditions, we can do this. So as long as aqueous conditions, this is completely okay and fair game. So as long as it's pure water, these things are true. The other thing is if you're at 25 degrees Celsius, then KW is equal to 1 times 10 to the negative 14th. If KW is equal to that, and we just got done saying that KW is equal to these things multiplied times each other. And if it's pure water, we could say that they are in fact the same thing. That way, I could say that KW, as long as it's pure water, is equal to that, to my H+ squared. If we're at 25 degrees Celsius, then I know what that number is. And that means that I could actually solve for this, I'm getting, it's going to get there, we're going to get there. 1 times 10 to the negative 7 is equal to the concentration of my hydroxide. I could then take the pH, which is equal to the negative log of my proton concentration. The negative log of 1 times 10 to the negative 7 is 7. I understand that for a lot of you, if I had asked you at the beginning, before I started talking, what's the pH of pure water? You would have told me 7. I know that. But what I'm telling you now is two things. One, now you can actually relate that not just to the proton concentration, but also to the hydroxide concentration. Because we did pH for proton concentration. But guess what? We actually also could have done, clearly need to fix my tablet, we also could have done POH, which is the negative log of the hydroxide concentration. This is kind of our new thing for chapter 17, so yes, this will also be on your exam. So we also could have done POH, dealing with the hydroxide concentration. And the other thing to tell you is that this pH of 7 is reliant on the 25 degrees Celsius. If you're not at 25 degrees Celsius, your value of KW is not 1 times into the negative 14th. In fact, there's usually a table, had I already pulled up my chapter 17 stuff? And there's usually a table that talks about KW. And so we could actually talk about being 10 degrees, 3 times to the negative 15th. So if we were at 10 degrees Celsius, then KW is 3 times 10 to the negative 15th. And we can still solve for the pH. But you don't get the same number. So pH is temperature dependent. So this is one of the things that again, is a bit new for this particular chapter. But you don't get the same answer when you're at a different temperature. So I can still take the pH, which is negative log, oh, times 10 to the negative 8. Sorry about that, 5.477 times 10 to the negative 8. And so that is 7.26. So my pH actually goes up when the temperature goes down. So these are some of the things that are coming in chapter 17, which yes, we are going to get to all of these things for this exam. So the only things that are not in this video, now I can do it. There's only one thing left, which is to do number 15 on 2019 exams. I'm looking at my list, I'm like, wait, no, no, I'm almost done. Sorry. Oh, life. It's fun. Originally, I was like, oh, I'm going to have to do this another time. My, no, totally do this. What are speed limits for anyway, right? Alright, so the last question, number 19 on the 2019, or 15, 15, 15. I might be in trouble, wait a minute. What did they want? Oh, maybe I don't have time for this, hold on. Sorry, y'all. Also, based on how quickly we got things out last time, I personally am going to be erring on the side of like, can I do this faster, instead of can I do this better? Because I at some point have to make a decision between quality and speed, and based on the number of people that email me and are like, when are you going to get me that thing? 15, it is 15. Whoopsies, not 19. Well, that makes me feel a little better, because I thought the key for number 19 actually looked really good. So oh, that's why no one liked it, is because, so it's like, why didn't you like 15? Because there is a little bit of, and then a miracle occurred. So let's take a look. Because they didn't write out the algebra. Oh, I was supposed to write out the quadratic one. Oh, that means I have to do one more. Okay. I forgot, I also promised to write out the quadratic, two videos it is. Anyway, let's just do this. Because everyone wants this video as soon as possible. Okay, consider the following reaction, ta-da. At 20 degrees Celsius, the equilibrium constant is, if this stuff is placed in a vessel and decomposes, what's the equilibrium partial pressure? This stuff, okay, great. So a reaction, this is ammonium hydrogen sulfide? Think? Maybe not. Actually, I don't know what that other polyatomic ion is called, goes to ammonia as a gas, plus, this is called hydrogen sulfide. As a gas. So this says that the solid is placed in a vessel. So that means that we put it in a box, and we put ammonia as a rock, because it's a solid, so it's right there, we put it, and it did its thing, it sublimated into gas particles to ammonia and hydrogen sulfide. So this is a solid. Solids are not in my K expression, I don't care about it. So I just draw myself a little wiggly line, because I don't care about solid, it's not in the K expression. So I'm not going to monitor its change, I don't care. That means I start off with none of these. Which means I need some, and this is in a one-to-one ratio, plus X, plus X, this, that, just X. My KP expression again, only has, I'm going to write these as partial pressures, only has ammonia and hydrogen sulfide in them. So those are the only two things that I have in my equilibrium expression. I don't get to put the solid in there. Solid, pure solids and pure liquids are not written in equilibrium expressions. So this is just X times X, or X squared, which is equal to 0.0701. So then we just square root both sides, and we go about our day. X is equal to 0.265. Atmospheres? Sure, atmospheres, I guess, because it's usually titled atmospheres. What'd you all do? Great. Did atmospheres, lovely. Sorry, I get to say y'all, because I don't know if you've noticed, but I was not with a teaching team in that particular spring. I was teaching biochem one instead, so that's why I'm like, I don't know. Okay. Cool. So yeah, so I think mostly the weird part is that since it's a solid, there are assumptions you get to make, it's not involved in the equilibrium expression. And you do get to assume that you have none of these products. I'm, I'm going to do my quadratic. I've got I've got time. So the thing I'm talking about is that there was a problem, woo, all the way back at the very, 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 very beginning. That I wanted to do four different ways, and I frankly just started to run out of time, much like right now. And I frankly just started to run out of time, much like right now. So what I'm going to go ahead and do, though, just to show off that the quadratic also works for the same thing, I'm going to do this one more time. I might do it a little bit fast because we are starting to get awfully close to can I make it to campus on time? But of course I can. Because I'm arrogant. No, also because I know how long it takes to do it. So these are all gases. All gases. We're going to start with point one more of each one of these, none of this. So I'm going to get plus two X, minus X, minus X, zero point one minus X, zero point one minus X, two X. And we want to have the equilibrium concentration. So during the regular exam review video, I did this one with a perfect square. I did this one with the X as small approximation. And I also did this one with fractional change row like Alex would actually do. The only thing I hadn't done is the quadratic, just to show off the fact that the quadratic also works. So I'm going to do the quadratic real quick. So I do go through that change row really quickly. The regular video has all of this talked through in detail. So if you're looking, pardon me, for information about this ice table, that is in the regular review video. The only thing I want to do right now is deal with the algebra. So two X all squared is in fact four X squared. Then I'm going to do firsts, so foil. Firsts, that is zero point oh one. Outsides insides and lasts. The two Xs. Oops, sorry for the changing color. Then I'm going to move this entire thing. And I'm going to multiply both sides by that entire thing. So I get one point five times ten to the negative ten times the whole denominator, zero point oh one minus, I'm going to go ahead and combine those because that is minus two X, I can combine that term as I do that is equal to four X squared. Then from there, I am going to distribute. This is my microphone, so I'm going to do my algebra this way. You don't have to. If you have a different way you like to do it. Ten to the negative ten X squared equals four X squared. Then for me, I know some people like to go ahead and move everything on the left over to the right. That seems like an awful lot of work. So instead, I am just going to rewrite this whole thing. And the only thing I'm going to do is I'm going to subtract negative four X squared. And it's only going to affect my X squared term. So this is going to change, it's basically just going to be negative four X squared. So that ten to the negative ten, it's so small that you basically don't see it. You don't believe me, put it in your calculator, take a look at it. But that ten to the negative ten, really, really small, basically rounds away. So then when I'm looking at what I have, I have A is negative four, B is negative three times ten to the negative eleven, C is one point five times ten to the negative twelve. So A, B, C, X is equal to negative B plus or minus the square root of B squared minus four AC all over two A. I never learned the little song that goes with that, so I did not sing it because I never learned it. And now just all of those numbers go in there. Ew. But here we go. Some people are really fast at this and more power to you. So negative, three times to the negative eleven, this is positive, three times ten to the negative eleventh plus or minus the square root of negative three times ten to the negative eleventh squared minus four times negative four times one point five times ten to the negative twelve. All over two times A, which is negative four. Simplifying parts of this, I'm going to do this in little parts. The actually, no, I did it one giant go. Since I did this yesterday, I'm just going to keep going. Plus three times ten to the negative eleventh, plus or minus four point eight nine eight nine times ten to the negative six. So I know that that's skipping some steps in there. So if that, there is a problem with that math, let me know. But essentially what should happen is this three times ten to the negative eleventh squared term is going to be so incredibly small, it's going to basically fall out of your calculation. And you're really just going to be dealing with what is basically going to be sixteen times one point five times to the negative twelve. So and you can do, you can, you can double check my math on that one. But that, that is what's going to happen. Because that, so basically this number is just the square root of two point four times ten to the negative eleven is what that number is. This is still then all over negative eight. Still all over negative eight. And then, as we all know, when we do this, you get two different numbers out of all of this. But they are almost, so basically the main difference here is that I have that positive and negative one. So if I take the positive option out of this plus or minus, I get X to be equal to six point one, two, three, seven times ten to the negative seventh. If I take the negative sign, I get X is equal to negative six point one, two, three, five, nine times ten to the negative seven. Because this is again, one of those times where when we're looking at our ice table, I can't have any negative numbers in my ice table. So the nice thing is because one of them is negative and I'm actually looking for this two X value, I can't have a negative number. If they were both positive, I would worry, I would actually take a look at something that the question didn't ask me for. Because nothing in the equilibrium row is allowed to be negative. So I would actually check both of those if both of my X values were positive numbers. But one of them is negative, so I can get rid of that really easily. The answer is supposed to be two X that we just looked at. And I get one point two two four seven times ten to the negative sixth, just like before. Okay, so I had not actually checked my email, so it's possible that I'm missing a question. But I'm going to end this video and send this one on. And if I need to make another one, then I'll make another one because this was an hour. So I hope this helps. And have a good little day and good luck on your exam on Saturday.